And. Same on thirty seven.
Yeah. Thirty second. Um.
Yes. Turn the camera on.
Um, yeah, I mean when, when we're all set. And that's like a slide. A video. Oh, Grace said something about you have to. Feel like, where do you come from? Uh, essentially. Fine, I'll work on the other one. To drop this window. Hold down. Click in the OBS window again. Yeah. Okay. And then if you pull down. Control, grab that little red dot, yeah. Oh, no, I was wrong about control making some. Oh, yeah. So yeah, keep dropping it like that. I would just go to the end of like cutting off. That I think when more people join. We want to see yourself. Well, now. Stretch that. If that. If you stay up. Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Good. Um. What, my Netflix turned off. Go back. Wrong. Make sure that. You're pretty good check. On settings. Make sure that those are. Uh. Now, I wonder. Are you able to? Um. I think it's like, is this a great view down here on the far right? You need to do this. Wonder if we had that. Probably the view we want is our cell. We cover over that a little bit. Probably that one of the screen. Yeah, that's the primary one that we want. Well, should we keep this one up as well? I don't think so. Just don't make that much. Alright. That's fine. I think if more people join. Um. We go to YouTube. Oops. Okay, um, that's why. Oh, we're live, right? Yeah, oh, whatever. Some people are going to see us being like that. Click on that. Um, hello. You can have that up later. Um, but yeah, so I think they do. So and OBS.
How are you?
Good, how's life?
Good? Did you go on well?
Yes.
Start of year?
Yeah. Um, it is great on lots of parts but like
Which I do, I mean I don't care.
This year's feeling a little zoo-like for me. I got five preps, two brand new classes, teaching a dual enrollment class called college algebra, super psyched. Getting some college credit, um, super psyched about it, but it's also a lot.
Yeah, five preps is a lot.
Is that mine? Yes, a lot. And then I've got, we've got a new math teacher, so I'm mentoring him, so like he and I are
Okay, let's do this.
Do it, do it, do it.
We'll be quiet when we need to. Okay, are we in?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so welcome to the regular Heartland School District school board meeting, uh, Tuesday, September 2nd. Uh, we're starting a little bit late, um, at six oh nine, uh, so we'll call this meeting to order. Um, first, I will take any changes or additions to the agenda.
Um, can I add just one quick, um, question, comment about PTO fundraisers that came up that was brought up to me by a new member?
Okay, uh, so we'll do that, I guess we'll do that as D under the items for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Great. Uh, so I will take Do we have any public or are we?
We do not.
Okay, there we go. I will take a motion to, I'm gonna list off all three and if there are any changes, we'll segregate them. Uh, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2025, which was a special meeting, May 6th, 2025, and then June 2nd, 2025, which is our retreat.
So moved.
I don't even remember if I went to all of them, I did get it.
Oh, right, we are gonna have to separate. You were not at the retreat.
No, I was at the retreat.
I was there too, I wasn't at special.
Was it bad? I was at the retreat.
Oh.
I was there.
Yeah, no, now we gotta look at the minutes and see who's there.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
We're here. No, no, we do need to, uh, sort out who was where. Okay, so, uh, are there any changes to the minutes and we'll vote on them individually? I don't hear any. Okay, so Beth is gonna pull up attendance. Christine, these are like still melty out of the oven.
I know.
Anyone?
Yeah.
Anyone want cherry tomatoes?
Well, this is still healthy.
Actually, did, wait, did Lori send them to us? Why do I not?
Uh, they're in the AC.
I don't even know.
They're in the portal.
What was, what was your special? I don't remember what the special was.
I think it was to make an offer to the person sending things to us.
Oh. I don't think I was at that.
Out of that one.
That wasn't just.
Oh, wait, do we do other things? Oh, do I have a tuition? Why? Let me see, the fifth board meeting was. Yeah, yeah, that was to talk about Ryan, Nikki, Hannah. We were all there. Okay, so we're all at the fest.
Yeah.
I can't wait.
Oh, no.
The.
No, 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 it wasn't the tuition thing, it was the, you were at the principal.
We, did you work?
Was that perfect?
That wasn't a matter.
Oh, okay.
I can be wrong.
Oh, yeah, they were not coming up easily, I had to go into the. If you can get them fast.
Yeah, we're looking to see who was at. I know I wasn't at one of them.
I'm actually back to the agenda. I know, it was doing that to me earlier, so I had to, okay. So. Okay, so everybody was up to retreat. The only one that's not pulling up for me is the.
So Christine Marley needs the sixth.
And I went on fifth.
Everybody was at.
Oh, I was at the fifth.
Yep.
So it was the sixth that maybe, I know, I feel like I wasn't, I don't know, maybe I was at home. Maybe I just made this a big deal for the reason, and I'm sorry. Wish I would've shut your mouth.
What you do, so I said.
Come to Hebrew school on Sunday.
We already start Sunday.
We're starting Sunday.
We will not be on Sunday because we're not gonna get. Okay, and I'm rounding the following again, so I would say fifty-fifty chance of. So maybe you can dance the Jewish parents, snapping in Hebrew school.
Do I need to call, do I need to guilt Adam again? You gotta remind him. I just, okay, I, I will, he's not very good at responding back.
Talking about something other than Hebrew school, probably respond back.
I go riving with pickles.
Yeah, that's actually probably the key. Not a good piece of.
If you come.
Remind him that it's two hours that like our children are engaged in something.
I know, yeah, and I get your teacher child, Hebrew.
It's just this, for like two hours.
The big kids go off to class, and then the baby pops around, but I'm gonna be in the hospital, so that sounds better than having all three of them.
Drop my kid off for a couple of.
Yeah. It's great.
Free babysitting.
Admittedly, that's how Heather pitched it to me, and then, and then.
Did you find it yet, Christine? We can vote, we can vote on the fifth and the second.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. All those in favor, yes, okay, we can do the fifth and the second together. All those in favor of approving the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty-five, and June second, twenty five, twenty five. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're on. Right. May sixth was, um.
So our schedule, the meeting, yeah, that one I'm on.
May sixth.
I think so, yeah, it sounds like the first.
So you need to know who was there?
Yeah.
Uh, on the sixth, it was Nikki, Heather, Beth, Hannah, Ryan.
Oh, just a joke.
Good, everybody there. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, okay.
No, it's not you.
Okay, um, we and, uh, for any public watching this later, um, we had.
We're usually far more organized.
Well, yeah, that, and, um, we had a bunch of, uh, different people out of town and, uh, administration were at a retreat, and we couldn't find a way to reschedule, so it's been a loss since we had a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But we're doing well. So, um, okay, public participation and announcements. Since there is no.
Aliza? Um, I would like to announce that, um, uh, or my public participation, as a new middle school parent, that sounds weird, of a sixth grader, I am blown away by the super cool electives that these kids get to take. Like, I can't tell you like how excited my child is to talk about the electives, and we had a friend come over the other day, and she was super excited about all these electives and like, like, all these things, and super excited about all the middle school teachers. Like, a lot of excitement around like middle school teachers and things like that, and I really appreciated all the communication they've gotten from both middle school teachers and third grade teachers, like just lots of communication, which is feeling really, really great. And I really like, uh, Mr. Romeo's new email, like, your wildcat weekly. Different than what it used to look like, but I really like it. Thanks for all that information.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So, nerds.
Although Sal was did come home saying he was taking cricket, and I thought, oh my gosh, how are you gonna learn a new sport? And who, what staff member knows cricket? That's crazy. Computer-aided design user.
Yeah. Were these two? I was like, what? I know, super cool.
I was hoping, yeah, I was like.
Someone's learning cricket.
Um, well, I'm looking forward to seeing pictures of school. And I'm also really sad that, um, I don't have anybody here. So it's kinda weird to not know about.
Oh, like your children.
Yeah, like I don't have children in school, it's weird to, yeah. Um, okay, well, I have an announcement too, which I think most of the board knows. This is going to be my last meeting, I'm.
It's probably why you brought cookies.
I did.
Oh, is that why you brought cookies?
I'm gonna resign at the end of this meeting, um, and I don't know if I just have to do a verbal resignation, or if I have to do a letter. Um.
We should just make her write a letter. As a matter of fact, exactly.
Ninety-eight notice? I know, exactly.
Is there a year notice? I feel like there's a year notice.
No, um, I just, uh.
I think, actually, I think she actually did that.
Yeah, I think I did do that. Um, yeah, so I've been on the board, I actually looked it up, I've been on the board for like nine years and two months. I think I've been chair for seven, so, um, it's just feeling like the right time to step away. Um, and my job is overwhelming, and my kids' schedules are overwhelming, and I'm trying to un-overwhelm my life. So.
That's amazing.
But I am insanely sad to not participate in the conversations that we have with this board, shaping the lives of the kids in our town, which is hard, really hard to walk away from, which is why I've been here for nine years, 'cause it is hard to walk away from, so. That's my announcement, and I'll, I think, I don't know, we're gonna have to elect a new chair at the end.
Were you, um?
No, you need a full board.
What's your seat? I mean, how many years?
Oh, uh, I think I'm due in March.
You're fucking March.
Yeah.
And do you know? But it wasn't two or three?
What?
Is it a two or three year?
Um, I just did a two year.
Usually we switch, yeah, so that, because.
And usually we alternate, um.
Yeah, 'cause I think mine was a three year.
Yeah.
'Cause like Hannah, you and I, we, I was a three year, you were the two year, and then when we were up together, I was, I went to the two year and you went to the three year. 'Cause we didn't wanna get signatures.
Okay, we might wanna think about offering the two year to somebody who's new.
Well, no, we have to, um, well, you all have to, uh, find a replacement for me, and then they have to be elected for the first time in March.
Right. They have to run. But do you think we should offer them a two-year spot instead of asking them to the three year?
Instead of the three year? Yeah. Yeah.
Better you, uh, who's up in the.
Beth, you're up in March? Okay. I don't think we should offer you the two year again.
No, I think you are doing the two year.
I haven't decided yet, I haven't been running again.
Oh, still working on that.
Board changes, I put. Christine's sad.
Just being transparent.
Have that message, uh.
Really close behind me.
Yeah, exactly, ears are.
Yeah, tomorrow with some kindergarten, so, yeah.
Okay, right again, uh, here we go. All right, so you have to either, um, decide, you can take applications to fill the position until March, and then that, then anybody can run in March, or you can function as a person in the board, I believe, until March.
I think.
I would rather try and catch somebody.
Yeah, I'd rather see if anyone was interested.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then if they can just sit out and see if they like, and then they can run, and that's, I'm like.
Yeah.
I'd rather have somebody feeling confident. Okay, can we pass over the cookies now? It's strong, yes, yeah.
There's so many. There's so many.
No, I don't, no, 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 they do, we can stop right here.
The homemade, I know, the homemade's amazing. Uh, um, so we can elect a chair, we should probably do it at the next board meeting, put it on the agenda, you think?
We don't need one to. You would just act as chair then?
Yeah, the, yeah, the superintendent opens everything, and they'll elect a chair. Uh, the other thing that I have figured out, trained Ryan on is, um, how to sign the manifests. So you guys probably need to change that.
Yeah.
And I also think that I'm the SU treasurer.
Okay.
Which means that I have done nothing except that I had to give my driver's license to the bank.
Right.
So there's gonna be a change there.
You're already signing the manifest. He trained.
You trained.
She signed.
Trained, yeah.
She signed, I'll sign next time.
Yeah.
So we'll have to.
But then we, do we still need a backup then?
Were, were you the backup?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
So, so you're not the permanent?
But I was the backup for a while.
Yeah.
You just told me what to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
You really got it down for a while, and they're like, it's really piled up.
So once she resigns, then we'll have to vote on a new signer of the manifest. And, and, um. So, whatever, whatever you just called that, the backup.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you wear the backup?
Yes.
Okay.
I can look it up.
I know, I just feel like not usually in town on, um. Office art.
Yeah.
And mess of art.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
I'll put all that on the agenda the next month.
Thanks, Nikki.
Yeah.
I was hoping you, I was hoping you wouldn't forgot, I was like, came to the meeting, and I was like, maybe Nikki forgot.
Nikki forgot that she changed her mind.
And she forgot that she's not gonna bring it up.
I know, it's hard, it's hard, but I think it's the right thing for the family, so.
Definitely.
It's a little lot, yeah. Um, and I also, like, John and I talked, I mean, John's the fire chief, and he's been that for eighteen years now.
I was gonna say since we've lived here.
Uh-huh. And, uh. Uh, that's his decision.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, uh, we both had a conversation like five years in to our respective roles of like, when you start to run out of a lot of really good ideas, it's time to move aside and let somebody else have good ideas. So, I feel like I've been trying to keep my head above water with all the changes they've been throwing at us as fast as we could possibly absorb them, and so, it's time. Okay, uh, moving on, unless there's other announcements?
I don't think we can have any more announcements.
You could totally have more announcements, okay. Um, so we have the administration report. There better be pictures of cute kids going back to school in here. 'Cause I need to see those. You want to be the chair? Do you wanna see my cute?
Please.
You got it. I love the new, like, sound mixing, all this.
I do, like fancy.
Can you, is there any chance when you get to the beginning of that? Noah, can you? Screen bigger. Yeah, I almost think, can you minimize all the other? It makes me feel cool, like we're really high-tech.
We are.
What if you go to view in the top? Can you change the view to just have like?
No dock to.
Yeah. Like full screen interface, maybe? Or, yeah, docs, is that considered some of those are, like, I would, yeah, take unclick scenes, sources, audio mixer, if you unclick those five, they'll kinda go away. Hannah.
Yeah, it looks like you gotta set it up.
Yeah. Where, where did this come from? She's got it.
I don't know why you dropped her. She's a little. Actually, I should go to Ryan's job, isn't he the youngest?
All right.
Yeah, I guess.
All right, um, so my presentation, I wasn't sure what you were looking for, so I, I kinda just took a little bit of things that we started, but everything that I do when I, when I do a presentation or, um, having a faculty meeting, it's good to recognize, uh, our wonderful faculty and staff. So, just a little something, um, for them, I thought was cute, I've come across, so, right? People ask that all the time, so.
They make a difference.
They make a difference.
For sure.
All right. Um, new staff, so just a little something for folks there. I think you were familiar with, uh, most of those, some of the paraeducators are new additions as we start to drill down to some of the needs within the classroom, so, just a little highlight.
Do we need to formally accept any? Teacher hires? Or did we already do?
We did.
We did the E E L A.
Yeah.
Yeah, kindergarten, that's all, yeah.
And paras and stuff like that at the SU.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And we did Frank too.
Yeah.
You did Frank.
Yeah, we did Frank.
So it'd be an awkward moment for us if we hadn't.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, that would be really. Who's this guy?
Yeah. All right, so, um, so I love this video, um, if it's possible, play it, I wanna teach this kid.
Jaden has one dollar bill, one quarter, and two pennies. How, how much money, how much money does he have? Jaden broke.
I love this video, not just because it's. Right, and as a kid and just teaching with kids, it kinda reminds you why you do some of the things, right? And come in, so I love that kid, and we put that in the beginning. Um, vision, just a reminder, uh, and, and that'll be, uh, again, out, out to faculty, just as a reminder of some of the things. Um, one of the things that's important when you're working with faculty and staff is everybody understanding, and I can tell you within this district, and I'm not saying it, Chris Christine's sitting here, is that I feel that there is an absolute vision and admission, and, and that's not always, I've not always felt that way where I am, right? And I feel like everyone knows where we're headed and what we're trying to do, and so I think it's always good just to, to put that out there, um, so that's good. So, some new expectations, uh, on the left-hand side is, uh, PTO, night before the chalk, uh, welcome back, so I took some pictures of that, and I really, uh, I got to meet some kiddos and some great families and talk a little bit about, um, the community, and I thought that was really nice. For expectations, just some things that we're working on, can't see.
I don't, no, no, you're fine, I'm just.
There's a little glare.
There is a glare.
Just turn that light off, Heather.
There you go.
If you turn that over a little.
No, it's, it's okay. I think we were really, like, I can.
Okay, yeah, good.
No, you're, you're.
Okay. Um, so some expectations, one of the things that's important for me as an administrator is when we're looking at past, uh, we're looking at new, we're looking to dust things off, is where is it written? Where is, where are these things written down? So some of the conversations we had about some discipline, about hoods, about earbuds, and my question was, do we have a policy written down? Or do we have something written down based off of a policy that the board has approved? So one of the things I'll be working on is sort of putting together some protocols in place so that they're documents for not only the faculty and staff, but the students to understand. Uh, for instance, no hoods. To me, that's just a safety issue, uh, and as an example is that you can put earbuds in, and I wouldn't know if you have a hood on, and if there's an announcement, if there is a fire, uh, if there's anything like that, I need to know that you can hear not only the adult or the announcements. Um, your peripheral vision is also cut off with hoods, and so, right, if you need to get around a corner or something, um, and God forbid, I needed to look at camera if we had somebody, uh, on campus or in the building, I need to be able to see faces. So it hasn't been a pushback, it hasn't been a, a problem, but I know that it was sort of a new expectation from the new principal, but to me, it's, it's a safety concern. Follow-up with no cell phones, as we know from the state, so we just have that in there, no earbuds, no, I can't see the screen.
I know, you have to like make the line.
Um, working on, uh, some hallway etiquette, uh, just as you're walking around the building and recognizing that the upper grades are making their way through some of the lower grades, and making sure vice versa that we're being respectful, especially with the new schedule, it's got people moving around. So, uh, putting together again a protocol that we could hand out to students that they could go over, and they can say. Dress code, another thing to take a look at, I think, over this year, I, I've asked some questions, and we'll say, well, that's on a dress code book that's not written anywhere. Uh, and I, I am a big believer of, of being able to express yourself, I have a twenty-one-year-old daughter, but I wish wouldn't, uh, right? So I understand, but I also wanna make sure that we're being respectful, and so I think there needs to be some things written down so that everybody understands. Um, a new expectation, something we're working on, is a hallway pass system, it's a digital pass system. So it's a number of, of reasons, and really to highlight, one is safety. So, um, is it, for instance, if Michael and I should not be out in the hallways at the same time, if we're on opposite ends of the building, and I'm issued a pass, it's a digital pass, if he's on the opposite end and he gets, tries to issue a pass, and we'll deny him until I sign that game. So if you're working with groups of students that maybe you don't want out at the same time, right? Uh, or for whatever reason, it's a good way to monitor that. It also alerts, uh, folks when they're going to different rooms, so if I have a student that says, hey, I'm going to guidance, hold on, let me, let me write you a pass, or let me get a pass, you can get an alert on the other side, knowing that a kid is coming. So to help us track, uh, students, so in the event, right, that a student says I'm going somewhere, and they go hide in the bathroom, or they go somewhere, we have the ability to monitor and kinda know where they're supposed to be, while also having. we have the ability to monitor and kinda know where they're supposed to be while also having an alert.
Frank, is there a, is there like a written policy or criteria for an instance where like that happens? Cause I as soon as you said that, I think of like two parents that are like, oh, why is my kid not allowed to be in the hallway with another kid? And then you can basically say like, here's a criteria and the issues that this boxes that this student checks and this is why.
So what we'll do, and we haven't gotten the pass system yet, and that's a great example, so we're gonna put together sort of the protocols of how to follow, what to do. If in, for instance, there is a situation where two students um shouldn't be, that will be a notification, but most likely, there's probably been already a conflict that exists and so one of the safety features would be, I understand that you don't want your student interacting with this student, here's what we're gonna do, as part of that, within our pass system,
Okay.
they will not be out at the same time or they don't be issued a pass at the same time.
Okay.
Isn't that something we can include in the safety plan? Correct. As parents, you're saying. Yeah, that's something I've always included in safety plans when we've used it is to say, um it'll also, whatever also is a nice feature and this will be something that obviously won't be public, is that we'll have a monitor and on that monitor, it shows students out, what students are out and for how long. So if I walk into my office, which I'll have a monitor, I can quickly go, oh, Michael's been out for ten minutes, I may need to go check on Michael, right, and where Michael is.
Yeah.
Um so it's just again, a good way to keep track of students for safety purposes. I've used the system in the past, it's really been very helpful, you can also, for folks that want to schedule passes, they can actually schedule passes into the system so that a student, you only see a counselor for instance, we don't need to run around handing passes, we can digitally, the teacher gets an alert, student gets an alert, so we know where the kid's headed.
Is it like an actual like wristband type thing?
Nope, just on the computer, everything's on the computer.
Is there like a computer that's like set aside that they do it on, cause it just.
The teacher has to.
Yeah.
Yep, so each room, each teacher can just real quick, so if you're like, hey, I need to use the restroom, you can make the pass at your computer, or I could say, hold on one second, if I'm on screen, I'll jump off, issue the pass, and then it goes and then you just have to make sure you check back in. And tha- and that's, I think, the one hurdle that we will be working on is everybody has to make sure they're using the pass system. If I have a couple, even as administrators, if I'm not following up on my end, then teachers are not gonna know if I call a student down, it's like gonna be returning. So everybody has to be involved in using it and so far, the feedback that we've gotten has been positive, we've talked with the middle school and then I had the uh four or five folks come and ask and say um that we we would be interested because they don't have uh restrooms in there in their classrooms as well, so being able to just monitor.
So you're thinking this would be in for the.
Oh, just for the.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And fourth, fourth, they all share the same bathroom, yeah, so if we're getting information about six, seven and eight, we're not getting the four butts.
Yeah, yeah, they're all down on this. Amen.
It's part of the church.
I always just ask, cause I I it might be and you know, cause you get the feedback from the teachers that it could be sort of disruptive if a teacher's over doing something on a board and then has to walk over to your computer and say, sign out, and you know, it's like monkey see monkey do, so one goes and the next one goes and the next one goes and all of a sudden the lesson turns to.
Yeah, I think there's there's gonna be, you know, that's part of the classroom management for for teachers and just being in classrooms as much as I have, I really feel like teachers have such a wonderful handle on the classroom management, right, it can ask to go to the bathroom, give me a moment, you know, let me finish what I'm doing, that type of thing and I've seen that throughout the building, so obviously, one of the things to work on, especially maybe with newer teachers, right, how to be able to and to have that somewhat seamlessly be integrated within your classroom, I think once people get used to it, it becomes second nature like anything else.
They they piloted at Weathersfield last year and the way they they've used it or the way I've seen it used, they have like an old laptop just in the classroom and the kids, they sign themselves out.
Okay.
They're the teachers.
That's how that's like by the door or whatever and they just.
Yeah, they just sign out, it it won't let them if they're not supposed to be, you know, it'll alert, like, no, there's too many kids in bathroom or whatever, so um.
You know, a- another thing as a data point, behavior's information, right, when a when a student acts a certain way, that's informa- that's information and so uh I've been in meetings where I've sat with parents to say so and so classroom and I pulled that up as a data point, your kid leaves to go to the bathroom every day, this class and to me, that's saying something about the student is looking for help or feels uncomfortable or something along those lines, right? A student that leaves to go to the bathroom every class, there's something along that, right? Um or or that particular class and so I think it also is a great data point as a conversation to help support some of the behaviors.
Um just I'm staying on this, um the dress code, I do think that there are some challenges
Mm-hmm, yes.
in school with dressing, um but I also worry um that the kids that are always in trouble will get nitpicked the most, um and that's by experience.
Yeah.
Um and so um it does make me really nervous to be cracking down on dress code and just being careful of which kids.
I don't disagree, and so one of the things uh much like cell phones is that I I do not want faculty and staff addressing dress code, uh right? So if you, something that you're, or just let us know and we will see if we need to have a conversation, but again, uh I feel I I'm about expression for students, I I think they should have an ability to do so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um and I I don't want teachers getting into into faculty and staff, getting into this power struggle about phones and about dress code and stuff like that, let us know and from there, that becomes discussion before we pass up now.
Right. And just actually on the dress code topic, so just from a policy perspective, what's the what's the precedent for sort of who writes dress codes? Are those, just regardless of those.
It's in the handbook.
It's in the handbook.
Yeah.
It's in the. And that's written by administrators, okay, it's not, that wouldn't be like, that's not considered like, okay.
Yeah.
I don't think you want a policy on it.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was wondering is like, how does that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we're addressing just some of the things that are, and maybe it's um drugs, weapons, alcohol, things like that, that we're making sure.
Messaging.
Yeah, stuff like that, it it when we say dress code, I think we automatically go to what you're wearing specifically
Yep.
and where it measures, but more, I'm just making sure that we're just kinda being especially.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say I'm less concerned about mid dress and more concerned about messages.
Yeah. Yeah, I absolutely agree with you.
But I think the truth is, is that you say dress code to a room with women in it and immediately women feel the worry about
Absolutely.
girls' bodies getting policed, so that's obviously the thing that I just would wanna make sure is like just being careful about that, that it's, you know, that it's
No body shaming. Yeah.
equitable, that it's applied, you know, that it's not, you know, um you know, I remember my high school principal getting up and saying that girls were not allowed to wear topless dresses to prom, meant sleeveless.
Yes.
And to first like fill the high school auditorium with
Yeah.
a bunch of boys' images of girls topless, right, like it just was like totally, you know, but it was like a great example of like, we are here to say what girls are allowed to wear to prom, you know, and it like.
Absolutely. Right. Well, they had them reach down and line up to see if they, if they're passing, yeah, nothing like that, it's more making sure that we're just messaging and.
Right. Right, yeah. Right, 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 yeah.
And again, I had asked, where was this all written and what and what, especially with some new things that are coming out, I wanna make sure that we're just covered in it.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is having it written, having something predefined is actually the most protective, right?
Correct.
People getting policed, because then it's not up to the, out of the beholder or the subjectivity of whichever particular.
It's not subjective. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And you you take emotion out of it.
Yeah.
Get all the emotion.
It's just a little. Our school became cellphone free with kids using yonder pouches, I have to tell you, it has been a game changer, absolute game changer, so um.
So define cellphone free.
Cellphone free, the kids, the moment they walk, they they come to school and they their cellphones have to be in their yonder pouch, same with their earbuds, in their Apple watches, anything that has the capability to connect to, that is like can connect to the wifi
Mm-hmm.
that has to be in their yonder pouch and.
What is a yonder pouch?
A yonder pouch, it's a pouch that locks at the top and they lock it and they put it in their bag
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then when they leave school, there are either people who are there and like it's a simple, like you touch the top
Like a magnet.
Yep.
And.
It unlocks.
And unlocks and there's some hanging around the school building that are locked during the school day and are then opened at two fifty five and it has been a game changer and the kids are just doing it, like we, I haven't had one kid complain to me. I had one kid ask me what would happen in like a major, like emergency situation, if they really needed to use their phone and I was like, well, and so we had to like talk about like, you know, major situations, so anyways.
Windows.
Yeah. We used them previously, said my previous place and uh it absolutely was a game changer, I was.
Yeah. Game changer. I highly, from from a a parent who has a child that all they want is a cellphone and I'm like, well, your school is cellphone free or you're not allowed to have schools in cellphone or you're not allowed to have them, so why would you want one? To like, I would rather just be like, well, you have to put on a yonder pouch for every day, so you know, but anyways.
But I I would say in the first four days, I mean, there there's been nothing, not one referral.
Did you think it was previously a problem?
I didn't think it was a big problem last year, I think I think it's something that exists and I think the yonder pouch might take some of it out.
Yeah.
But for every, everything that you put in, every step you put in, there will be a worker on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it's still a messaging, yeah.
Kids bringing two phones, like the fact that we haven't had any in classes in four days without the pouch, I think has been.
Yeah.
And it was pretty good last year, there were there were few last year, but not many, but now we also have the, we we certainly clarified with the middle school students at the first meeting, this is, this is not us, this is the state law, we don't have a choice here.
Mm-hmm.
It's interesting the interpretation, cause in New Hampshire, it's a similar state law, our children are in New Hampshire schools, they they should no longer have wifi at the school. So no wifi and um but they cannot use their phones, and this was the rule, I guess, previously, that they can't use their phones in attendance taking spaces.
Yeah.
Otherwise, like if you're at lunch um or free period, you can use your phone.
They're in high school.
And that.
We went to high school, kids.
And it's just, well, it's interesting in that like, it's just interpreting law differently in that sense.
Well, in Vermont, it becomes a law next.
Yeah.
Next, not this year.
Vermont, I mean, Hampshire it is now.
Yeah. I mean, the truth is, whenever people say like, well, how are you gonna enforce that, it's like, okay, sure, there's gonna be workarounds, but the point is if these kids are hearing at multiple levels
Yeah.
of their worlds, from the state legislation to their school administrators, to their parents, that these are sources of risk and danger to your development and education, it just will would just reinforce the idea that they that they need space without them and it will make it much easier, I think, to.
Sure. Yep, and I think if you're engaging students as well, right, and you walk around and you walk around this building, that we have, all our teachers are engaging students, there's no time
Yeah, right.
for them to even be looking and doing, right, so I I think it's a win-win, uh we have, like I said, Michael, um has been.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Great, awesome.
Uh eligibility protocol, so again, where is it written, we we had a, we have an eligibility procedure, but we really don't have it, yeah, we really don't have it written down
Of course.
sort of what the process is, so I put that together, so I'll be sending that out to everyone's aware, but it's it's pretty much just two weeks before uh uh the the period in which we will determine eligibility, we'll run a report, uh but instead of just looking at athletes, we're gonna look at all students and have conversations with all of them, right, we shouldn't just say eligibility for athletes or uh.
Well, I think if somebody's in drama club or anything like that, that should be put on.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um and then we're gonna go through CJ, Michael and I talked about that with the counselors and then with the athletic director, um and then.
Well, and I said, so my son's in soccer and it was reviewed in a parent meeting for soccer, so.
Perfect, ex- excellent, yeah, I.
What if they don't, of course, like Ruby plays field hockey in Woodstock, so.
It's Woodstock's um eligibility, then it's this the school in which they are participating.
Okay, got it.
Of, cause then it could be a little different.
How would they know though, just how would they know that she's not eligible, like what are her teachers?
They've, so what what should happen, when I was an athletic director, we would communicate, if we were sending kids over, right? I would say, I need a copy of your athletic policy, cause it pertains to, and it should be the same, but sometimes uh maybe discipline procedures, maybe a little different and there should be a continued conversation with, hey, when do you do your eligibility or when do you do your graduation, like those type of things. So whether that happens specifically, I couldn't answer that question, but that's how it should happen.
Okay.
Um and again, where is it written, that's that's what I'm, and if it's not, then we need to get it in place. I do appear some goal to get a little understanding, try and keep them very simple and one is collaboration horizontally, so within our own building and then within the S U, um I'm new to all of this, so for B, it's it's just a matter of making sure we're aligned in our building K to eight, taking a look at that and then how are we going to be a part and share with the with the S U? And one of the things that came up as an example, we were talking, I think during uh one of the in-service days with social studies about having a mock trial with all of the schools, so 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 one can be defendant, one can be, one can be judge, so we're gonna talk a little bit about how we can incorporate sort of align, um so that's exciting. Behavior, we talked about that, and so just the communication, not only within our own building to students and faculty and staff, but to to families and making sure that that is open, uh and then community outreach and involvement, and I'll get a little bit to that coming up next and then I just met with the P T O, which was great and talked a little bit about some things that I'd like to do, um an iron chef competition with all students, maybe sponsored by P T O, I'd love to do.
Make sure you get Kelly involved, cause she's.
Be a champion.
Yeah, yeah, she's been, yeah.
We have some pretty cutthroat, smoothie competitions in the nuts.
Um I'd love to do a career day once a month, um that we sponsor, where we just have folks celebrating, um and maybe they come in, we have classrooms sign up and we just celebrate, when we do that, we typically go with like firefighter, police officer, but why not a business owner, why not all of the other people that we have within our district? So maybe come in once a month on a set day and have classrooms sign up and they can bring some things and we can have a multiple, we don't have one, we can have a number of people.
We have a couple of community members that are really involved with Dartmouths, um I forget what it's called, like employee engagement or somebody like that, like intended to cultivate career interest in the community.
Jetty.
Jetty and um ah I'm gonna forget her name, Bethany.
Yeah, Bethany, um.
Who used to be, anyway.
That'd be great.
Rory's mom.
It would be great.
Yeah, Lahey, Bethany Lahey, and yeah.
That'd be great, yeah, stuff like that, uh and talked a little bit about maybe faculty, student fun thing, like
Anyway, so.
a basketball game or something like that or wing eating contest, something to get and have some fun with the kids outside.
Dodgeball, those teachers love to play dodgeball.
Well, that, in the basketball, they always do a.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to do, is the basketball.
Twenty eight grade basketball game.
Yeah. I want to say that that was the biggest P T O I've meeting that I have ever walked by.
Yeah, that I walk on each year, crushing one, yeah.
That P T O.
And.
Crushing it.
Yeah, they're incredible. And we didn't have a P T O like what?
For a while.
For five years.
Yo, I mean, that thing has been resurrected from the den and you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alexa, Trisha.
Beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, to just see the size of the P T O meetings.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was, it was very nice.
Awesome, yeah.
Um but just to kinda finish up here, some old new, we're still gonna do some recognition that we do uh biweekly, which is uh recognition of of students' birthdays, I um I stole this from another school, I'm gonna be sending out birthday cards home to our kiddos so that they get a little something, um yeah, so I started the first round in September and we'll go all the way through the summer, so I think we sent out nine for this month so far. Um again, just a little something for for kiddos.
It's fantastic.
Newsletter, which we talked about a little bit, um Wildcats, so I I bought four Wildcats, little stuffed animals and we handed them out, I handed them out at the beginning of our faculty meeting and just to recognize four folks or four groups and they get to keep them all month, they can name them, dress them up, and in the first faculty meeting of each month, they are to recognize some of their colleagues and and pass them along. So just a good way to have some fun and kinda recognize some things that we're doing. I have caught you being good cards, which are cards that we'll give out to students, just as it's, as said and we'll keep half of it and we'll put it into a lottery and then we're gonna pull them out and I I would like to like award them books or something, all of those lines. Um we usually do two or three uh every biweekly and so we'll just get some books for folks and stuff. I do, I would like to work on a book vending machine, uh that's something that through a grant I was able to obtain previously, so I'm gonna look into it um and I can tell you what, a- as corny as it sounds, like a book vending machine, but kids couldn't get enough of how to get books out of that, they would ask, how do we get coins? So it's something I'm gonna look into, it's adorable and it puts your mascot and your logo on it and um it's nice to see kids go up and and want something other than stick in their face to get candy, um to wanna get a book, so thank you cards also, and that's for faculty and staff, it's just little postcards that every couple of weeks, four or five, will just put in their mailboxes, just to recognize. Um Wednesday and Friday, there were traditions of uh dressing up and positive messages on Wednesday on shirts and Friday is uh our pride day and athletics, I just put up there, I talked a little bit about the.
Pride, being like proud of the school.
School, yep. So I don't have any gear yet, so I'm gonna have to.
You better get busy.
I know, I know, I have to get onto the website.
I feel like we need to get more gear, cause like I feel like.
The rec always seems to have a lot.
The that's where I get my gear is through like the rec or actually my nephew who lives in Mifflinburg, Pennsylvania, they are also the Wildcats, so I get a lot of gear through there that says Wildcats, sometimes I heart them.
I heard a bunch of the school store, a little store last year.
Yeah, I feel like we need to like, I wanna order more stuff.
I agree.
Put it out there.
Um. Yep.
Are you still doing, I saw the heart awards, but you've been saying you're still, we're still going, okay.
Yes. Yep.
Same.
Yep, same thing, so this, I'm just gonna buzz through, I just our counselors, uh make sure they streamline the process of how to keep in contact with them to keep kids safe, so they put that down for me and I just kinda added it out there because um right, our our S E L programming and what we're doing for our students is so important and so there's that that there and just added that, so that's good. Um and school behaviors, that we talked a little bit about, behavior matrix that that we published. Um, and school behaviors, that we talked a little bit about, behavior matrix that, that we published, and just following up, uh, making sure that we're staying on top of that, that's good, thank you, that's great, um, and that's just sort of our protocols, I just have it up there, so that you know that there is something in place when asked, kind of, what are we doing? We have that stuff in place, Michael's done a wonderful job. Uh, that picture, I saw, I asked, I have it in there, because I asked, my previous, uh, counselors wanted to do a presentation for the school, and this is how they see me. So, they put it in there, I, I kept it.
It's got hair on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I have hair on there, so.
There's more hair on it, so.
They didn't tell me, it was just, we were going to some elementary schools, and I had gone over, and I just sort of paid attention, but I thought this is how my faculty sees me, so, I kept it in there. Um, that's good, and then, that's there, is we have this, uh, within our maintenance program, and talking about Kelly, we're doing this fantastic composting, uh, program that has been wonderful, kids, teachers, everyone has been participating, um, and doing a great job, the building looks great, yep, and, uh, the kids have been wonderful, and it's sort of, uh, all hands on deck, and it holds a great, so, I just included it in there, if you clicked on it, you'd be able to see sort of the details, but, uh, it's worth mentioning, cause it's been fantastic.
You know, the kids built that.
Yeah.
Pretty awesome.
Well, I got this, yes.
Yeah, I think it was our, yeah, yeah, it's a case of.
Yeah. And open house, just a reminder there, so.
And I saw Betsy's garden when I came in, yeah.
It's pretty awesome, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, my turn.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna transition over to my report. Which has a lot of pictures, but not a lot of kid pictures, I was just, uh.
I know, yeah.
Sorry.
No, I'm just feeling like you sent me a picture.
No, because I haven't been here.
You should probably.
You sent me a picture of Ruby.
I just need to come draw something on.
It was so studious. I love, yeah. I love when the superintendent sent me pictures of my child.
Yeah.
She was so studious.
I know. Hey, she's here.
So, uh, I'm just gonna share, we just opened school, so I've got a little bit of information on, um, how that all went. So we started with the new teacher onboarding, which we now have two days instead of one, which is awesome, it's not enough, but it's better than one day. Um, so we spent, um, the first day, uh, just welcoming them, doing some get to know each other, we had, um, presentation from our curriculum office, from the tech department, from, um, our licensing, um, standards board people going over the new licensing system that we all had to transition to this summer.
Just keep changing.
In the uni, I know.
Just keep changing, it's great.
The reunion, um, we had a presentation from Jen, Jennifer Aldrich, she did, uh, a workshop on trauma, trauma transformed education and collaborative problem solving, which is very important, and then staff had to, um, do a seven habits training, that could have been done in person, we had a regional training, or they could do it online, so they got to choose, uh, we onboarded nine teachers, which is, like, just joyous. The room was not full, in the past, it's just been packed full.
Yeah.
And having nine people felt really good, so.
That's for the whole SU.
That's for the whole SU.
That's pretty good.
Crazy.
We all ran in, oh my goodness, I can't even tell you, we had like a massive.
Onboarding's a lot.
Ever, ever left.
A lot, so, yeah, it was really nice to, to have nine, and they're fabulous, all of them, so, we were very fortunate.
Yay. Elegibility, yeah.
Um, we had, that, that was followed by the welcome back, uh, we, teachers had two day, we had two days of teacher onboarding, and, oh, they had time with their mentors as well, and we did bring in new support staff, and they met their mentors and had lunch, and so, um, didn't, didn't leave out the support staff. Then the, the teachers had two days of prep time in their classrooms, and then that brought us to last Friday, and we did the SU welcome back, which, which, uh, felt really good, we had some fun, we honored staff with service awards, years of service awards, which they really appreciate, and I can't tell you, I get emails like, multiple emails questioning like, I think I should have gotten the ten, I think I should have gotten, so, check the dates, and, um, so anyway, we had presentations from, uh, Ian is up there in the bottom corner, he did a really fabulous job talking about the service program and, and the goals for that program, and.
Can I mention Heartland in particular?
Yeah.
The number of people who were getting these awards.
Yeah, a lot.
From Heartland was outrageous, again, like.
Lot of service.
Ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty-five.
Five years.
Who was thirty-five, was that?
Sam.
Oh, wow.
Wasn't he thirty-five?
I think John was the thirty-five, and the, um, plus, plus you can add twenty years to that for driving the bus, so it's really.
I was about to say, he was my bus driver.
He started driving the bus when he was in high school.
He started driving the bus when he was eighteen, and he needs to keep driving the bus, because he'll, he's the only one that comes up our road.
He was eighteen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But it was, it was amazing how many.
Where's Sherry Craver, she must be.
She must.
She got something.
Thirty.
I think she's thirty.
She was thirty, we had two.
Mighty, Daryl.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
They're so good.
What about Linda, Linda must be.
They're thirty-five. I was gonna say, I'm not gonna play, but.
Yes, I have that.
Awesome, nice work, too, yeah.
But it was great, yeah, they, they enjoy it, it's fun, um, so, we had, um, we had the welcome back, Ian did a lovely job, Bridgette, our curriculum director, spent some time talking to the staff, the food service department, um, cooked lunch for everyone, breakfast and lunch, and I have to tell you, they did a taco bar on Friday, which was out of this world, I mean, everyone was just raving, raving about being able to go through, like what they wanted on the taco, so. Uh, it was a good, it was a good first, um, opening, and then we had, uh, curriculum work following that, um, staff members in grade level groups, working on, uh, K five, they were working on common assessments, really ordering the units, they, they've been using Amplify CLA for a year now, so they've gotten used to it. They, um, requested like rearranging some of the units, so it makes sense when you're teaching plants, you know, that's in the spring, and those types of things, so.
It's not in the winter.
They got together in groups and, and did some curriculum mapping, and they're working on common assessments, and we have, um, asked every teacher, um, to, to upload in Power School, the end of unit assessment, so we're trying to get consistent across the SU. It's hard when you have students in multiple schools, and you're seeing different things in Power School, so we're trying to create some, um, just consistency across the SU. So they were working on that, the middle school team is starting the proficiency work, the high school did last year, without the support of the AOE, because they pulled that away from us after Act Seventy-three was passed, but Bridgette is leaving it on her own.
This is, this is.
Yeah.
First step, keep it going.
After we planned the whole year, they said, no, we can't do that, um, so, uh, we pivoted, let's figure it out, and the high school's working on our assessments. We also.
We need a T-shirt, we know, sorry, and it's like the summary of life right now.
Yeah. We also had, uh, Heather Lynn come in, and she did a two-hour HHE training with all staff. So, everybody understands the law, the policy, the procedures, what their responsibilities are, the process that we have to go through, um, I thought it was really well received, and people were happy to have the information, I think everybody wants to do what they're supposed to do, they just need to know, so, that was one of the days.
That's awesome, that was a really good idea.
Yeah.
Goes after we get ours.
Yes, and we, administrators and designated employees had a separate session earlier in the month, so that we are all on the same page, and, um, so we worked hard.
It's a scary thing for the teachers, and Heather is so good at.
Yeah.
Yeah, she knows her job. Making it less scary, but also.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, like it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, and then we had our welcome back students, and I, I, I didn't get to see Frank deliver, or Michael deliver their behavior, um, expectations to the students, but, um, we sort, we, we worked together this summer as an administrative team to create the presentations for elementary, middle and high school staff, um, we have a parent one as well, that, um, people have access to, so, everybody delivered the same information across the SU, which was great, yeah.
Nice.
Um, this is not as fun, uh, just keeping you informed, the district quality standards are going into play this year as a, as a beta test, so we're, we're self-assessing the rubrics, um, and we have to do that between October fifteenth and November fourteenth, and the agency has developed the rubrics in consultation with QL, so we know what's on them, um, we're in a pretty good place, especially in the business operations, facilities and the governance, uh, we have our local comprehensive assessment system in place, and so.
Fours. Four. Four through the board. There's a couple.
Say that again?
Fours through the fours, we, we did well. You said you're saying yourself assessing, so.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes, fours.
Fours.
Fours, I'm kidding, yeah, above proficient, yeah, yeah. Um, so the bottom two, local comprehensive assessment systems, and continue, continuous improvement, those come from the education quality standards, those are the two pieces of the quality standards that, that we're, um, assessing this year, so I'll keep it posted, but I think we're in very good shape. And then, last but not least, Act One Seventy-three updates for you, I'm gonna try to keep you informed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there was a meeting on August first, I did, I was able to attend that one, um, what was discussed at that time, basically what problems are we trying to solve, what are the goals, commitments that we wanna shape our decision ma, that we want to shape our decision making from these goals, these are possible decision criteria to use to el, um, to evaluate proposals, so those are the questions they kind of came up with. Does this proposal ensure that every child has a fair chance, does it provide a path to better opportunities and outcomes, does it get more out of every dollar for the monitors? Does it, um, uh, does, does the proposal preserve opportunities for public input and voice in the schools? That remains to be seen.
I'm allowed to vote?
I know, obviously you can't vote.
I appreciate that, like, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
With these redistricting community, like committees, that like, I appreciate that not only they asking about like the educational value, but like, you know, the, are we getting, are we getting more for our dollar?
Right.
Because I mean, I, I really feel like this is becoming really hard for the monitors, like, you know, I think everyone is feeling the like, oh my god, I can't do this anymore, taxes-wise, like, I don't know, like, so, I appreciate that that's, like, that's still there, it's, it has to be, because it's, it's brutal.
Yeah. Yeah. So they met on the nineteenth, I was not able to watch that all-day session, I have new teachers in front of me, um, and they don't have minutes up yet, and I have not had time to watch the, the videos, but.
They should have minutes up by now, don't you think?
They didn't, yeah, but they weren't as of today, when I went back and checked, but, um, from what I heard, uh, they are, uh, requesting, they, they requested data needed to complete their work, there is a sheet of data that they request, and we click on it, just so you just see it, hold on. I can do this. Uh, so they, they need to get this data from the agency primarily to do the, to do their work, okay? So, if you just wanna look at the list, I'm gonna read it all to you, but, uh, it's long, it's a lot of data, and they need it.
So they're asking this before they can make a decision?
They need it now.
And. Does anybody work?
I mean, I don't know how they're gonna pull this off.
Is there anybody in the DOE?
This is the data they want.
This is the data they requested at the meeting.
You're still scrolling.
Yeah, on the nineteenth.
It's not loading fast enough for you.
So, I don't know.
Is that, can, is that publicly?
Yeah, it's on the website, if you go to the, uh.
Act Sixty-three committee, or?
Act Seventy-three.
I mean, sorry, Act Seventy-three. Can you get your act right, please?
Act Seventy-three, yeah, and if you go, if you go to the AOE website, Akana, and you just search, um.
Get your act together. Get your T-shirts. Get your act together. And pivot.
And we just, if you go back, of course, you'll, it's on there.
Yeah, and then pivot, get your act together, and then pivot.
Okay. So, what I, what I heard, they did spend time, this, talking about debating whether to rely more heavily on the data from the state or the district's preferences, and I don't know where they landed on that, I, I did hear one member basically said, we were tasked with going back to the legislature with three plans, that's our charge, we weren't tasked with taking input from what communities want, um, I don't know, it, it's feeling like it could get ugly.
It already is.
So, I think like, as, as we sort of like hear about this, acknowledging the, you know, major absence of information, and the time crunch, and, you know, the likelihood that this, that they get to their eighth meeting, and then drop something the next day that is final. Do you have the impression that there is anything that we should be doing as a school board or a school community to advocate for Heartland?
I mean, that's where it starts to get ugly, right, cause people start advocating for what they want, and I, I don't think it's, I think it's important to engage the community in discussion about this, um, in particular. I know that, I know that people are getting together and talking about what they want, and, you know, I don't know that that's bad, but I don't.
And there was talk at the SU level to have some sort of community forum.
Yes, we did talk about that, like.
But like, I guess I mean more specific, like, I think actually what I struggle with as a community member and a school board member is, what do we want? Because I think what we had wasn't working, right, we all acknowledge that, right, we don't wanna go through budget cycles where we're fighting with our neighbors, to get money to open a school. And so, that wasn't working, and so, but I think what's really challenging is to actually know what is the right path forward. There are some worst-case scenarios for Heartland, right, closing Heartland school would be a worst-case scenario, I think for most people that live in town.
Absolutely.
And then there's probably a variety of good enough case scenarios, right? Like, I think there are a variety of outcomes that we could all agree are acceptable for this town. A mega high school in, you know, on Route twelve, that is Hartford and Woodstock and Windsor, right, that I think would be acceptable for most people. A continuation of Heartland as it exists, K to six, moving to something, right, I think a lot of Heartlanders would feel that, right, like, so there's, but so how do we,
I think, yeah.
how do we protect against that worst-case scenario, right, and also cultivate like a little bit of openness, cause I am hearing growing anxiety amongst parents that I think is actually not reflective of any particular outcome they can imagine, other than again, this worst-case scenario, the school closing. And so, like, how, like, I, I do wonder, do we have some responsibility to be?
I, I think you need to hear from your constituents.
Yeah, messaging in some way about what, you know, that, I don't know, cause I think part of what is scary is just the unknown.
I think it's gonna be, I, I mean, this is just what I'm hearing, you know, it's hearsay, but, I think, I think there is some, um, understanding that a regional high school might be a good move for all parties involved. Where that is, I think is important, I, I think, when, um, and I know Woodstock needs a, needs a high school, but I think if Woodstock builds a high school, and the Windsor, Hartland, Lennisfield taxpayers have to pay for that high school, and it's in Woodstock.
On the far side of Woodstock.
I don't know how that's gonna go over.
I don't think it's gonna go over.
But Hartford needs a, and.
Hartford needs a high school, so. My, I mean, I think it needs to be a new.
Yeah.
Like, central.
Well, and like, what's interesting is that Heartland, like, when you look at the map of the Windsor districts, it is.
It's Hartford, yeah.
And so.
I mean, I think people could get, uh, their heads around that, I can't imagine Woodstock taxpayers, I mean, Win, Windsor is a beautiful school, probably in the best condition,
Yeah.
has, has space to add on, it could take, could become a high school, right, and then, but, Woodstock, same thing, you're not going to.
Yeah. But, Woodstock kids. Cause we drive. We've got kids who come from, you know, Clarington and.
That's right, Bridgewater, and.
Yeah.
So I think those conversations should probably just start to happen, and I think at the board level.
We were, yeah. Yeah, how do we, the, the like.
It's already.
Well, the SU board is, is already started something that. Yes. But like, do we have Heartland, and like, is there a way that like, or should we as Heartland board members start talking to, or have.
Yeah.
Talk to?
Or just invite, invite the community to come and listen to them.
Yeah, cause I think that a big piece of this, like, even hearing like, oh, the SU's talking about it, like, I think that's great, except that it's not, again, it's sort of is, again, it's isolating the conversation, right? Like, the purpose is, how do we cultivate some buy-in in these potential solutions?
It's also, yes.
I think part of the challenge is that, that the way that things are right now, the community, like, we don't wanna create a false premise that the community has any say.
Yeah, like right now, because.
It's a tricky place, it's a very tricky place to be in.
And so, we want maybe to know how they feel, I mean, we definitely wanna know what our community wants, but we also can't.
We don't have any say in it.
We can't promise.
We have promises.
We can't make any promises, but can there be, I mean, you know, when you think about the like rural school collaborative, is that what they're called?
Rural lines, rural school lines.
Rural, rural school lines, right, like whether or not there is some value in having some connection to that group, right, like just, so that people at least know there's some, again, advocacy happening, not necessarily to name which of those possible okay solutions manifest, but to protect and to guard against the worst case, right, cause I think that's.
Well, you gotta hear from the, from your community what they think that worst case is.
Right.
What they, what they will scan up.
Cause you might have some people who are like, close Heartland school, like, send it somewhere else.
Yeah, so that the taxes go down drastically.
You know, like, yeah, exactly, the taxes will go down, if, if they won't. I mean, they won't, though.
They tend to naturally go up.
I mean, not, I, I think also like, I mean, again, we don't wanna go down this road again, but, we all know this isn't gonna save anybody, anybody, right? Yeah.
No, it's gonna work, it's a start.
I mean, I mean, the driver of the cost is health insurance for the employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of. It's not anything happening in any of these buildings, but.
I, I'm.
Okay, so you don't have any insight right now into any way that Heartland could have any impact on this?
No, I think, I think we need to engage the community. I think probably in the next month or so. I, I do have, um.
Does that mean like inviting community to the meetings? Like do we need to be a little bit more clear about?
I think you have a meeting where you hear from the community.
But I feel like, why are we doing this at the S U level? We need to invite everybody.
We talked about doing it at the S U level.
I just don't wanna double.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, but don't you think, I mean, not, again, like I, not, I think that there is, there is a cohort in Heartland. That sees, that has um, like a, an, a bit of exceptionalism attitude, right? That are not gonna wanna be.
This is the time that we're gonna have to come together as.
I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you, but there's, there, I think that like some of it is people being able to still feel. For the time being, Heartland still has its own school system. Right?
Yeah.
Right, we're on a district, right? We're on a supervisor union. So for the time being, there has to be some place for constituents to come and talk about.
Just Heartland.
The specific, right? Cause the implications are very different to be a town that has school choice, to be compared to a town that doesn't have choice, right? I mean.
But we can, like, I wanna hear from people, but we have no.
They can tell us what they think if we can advocate for them, but that's all we can do. We can only advocate. We have no.
I'm, I'm gonna, I have a, I have a V S A all-member meeting, I think it's next week. And um, I should hear more. You know, updates from Chelsea at that time. And I guess the question is, if they're talking about, you know. Whether they wanna rely on data from the state or what districts are advocating for, like somebody should tell us that.
Right, right, right. So that we can be advocating. I think that's my point is, like I, I, I hear you that like it's not up to us. And at the same time, I think this is potentially, I mean, this potentially has massively significant implications to the town of Heartland, right? You, that house that has high property taxes, you wanna see that property value fall real fast, take away school choice.
Yep.
Right? That is gonna really change property value dynamics in this town. So people, that is a very different conversation.
You just have to hit the screen.
Then, so, and I think there has to be some opportunity for us to, uh, right, we can't control, but we can advocate and I don't think that. But do, but our state, who, which of our state reps are on, uh, is it on, is Becca White on?
Uh, Rebecca Holcomb. I don't think Becca White's on the redistricting.
I.
She's not, she's not our rep.
Oh, she's um. Anyway, we can look, yes, we could.
The list of who they are.
And then it's like retired superintendents, right? Is the.
Yes, yeah.
Any of them that have any relationship to us or are they?
Yeah, Jay Bettemus, he was the Hanover, um, superintendent, just retired. Just, just retired.
Super interesting.
Yeah, yeah. He, he's from Pennsylvania. He went through this in Pennsylvania, so he's, he has some good experience.
Which is interesting that he's not from Vermont.
He's not from Vermont, but he's been, uh, he's been, well, Hanover is, um, Dresden, Dresden, so it's an inter- interstate. So he has experience.
What is gonna happen? Do you have any idea what's happening in Norwich? Is Norwich just exempt from all of this?
I think Norwich is exempt at the moment.
Like even from the foundation formula?
I think so. I think, I'm not positive, but I.
Cause we have Riven Dell up there too.
Yeah.
Exempt from the foundation formula.
Well, cause they have their high school in Orford.
Yeah.
But even at the elementary level?
Yeah, I mean, they have two elementaries.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I think, um.
That's it, yeah, well.
It's, it's probably time to start thinking about having this community something where people can come and talk about their, their thoughts on this, what they want. Share that information with the task force. They're, they're only required to have two, um.
For the entire state.
Yeah, two.
So if we get every single school member in the state to show up at the community engagement.
Two, yeah, well, they have to do two. Like they, the task, one of the task force has to do.
Focus on them.
Right, right. So I'm gonna keep you updated, um, with whatever I hear. I'm gonna try to attend the meetings when I can. But I don't know, I'm, I'm, I have some concerns about all of it. Uh, the last thing we have to talk about today as part of the administrative report is our continuous improvement plan. So, um, this is, oops.
Sorry.
It's okay. As you may or may not recall, this has gone back and forth. We've had to have, um, continuous improvement plans at the district level. Then we had to have just one at the S U level. Now we're back to every district has to have their own continuous improvement plan annually. And it is also your school improvement plan, which is required for Title One. It's one and the same now, which is, which is helpful. So we did look at, um, Bridget did a data inventory and shared it. So Frank really wasn't in on writing this. It was Lindsay and her instructional team leaders, interventionists. And, um, Bridget helped, but I just wanted to share it with you a little bit tonight. It's probably nothing that you're not expecting, but, uh, the first goal is. Hundred percent of students have grown math and reading proficiency, so we believe that each child has capacity to grow. Maybe they're not gonna grow, um, they're not, maybe not all gonna be proficient immediately, but they all will grow. So that is one of the goals and as part of this plan, you have to list the measures. And the evidence-based strategies that you're gonna use and the resources that you're going to use. Some of them are tied to Title One, so those are listed there. That's really small, but, um, I could share this out with you. The next goal is around reading and it is the percentage of Heartland students. Who are proficient or above in the Star Reading Assessment in grades three through eight will increase from fifty-four percent in the winter of twenty twenty-five. To sixty percent in the winter of twenty twenty-six. So we're using the winter benchmark as our, as our target. And it just lists how we're gonna do that and the resources needed. Then there is a goal for, for math as well, and that's grades one through eight. Percentage of Heartland students who are proficient or above in Star Math Assessment in grades one through eight will increase from sixty-six percent in the winter. Seventy-five percent in the winter of twenty twenty-six. And, um, there is a goal, it's down below, based on Act, um. One thirty-nine, which is the early literacy law. And so there's a separate goal for K three, where, and we're gonna use the Dibble's assessment to measure that. And that's, um, students in K three will increase proficiency from thirty-six percent in the winter of twenty twenty-five. To forty-five percent in the winter of twenty twenty-six. So those are the biggies. The, the goal, safe and healthy school goal is around chronic absenteeism. Cause we're finding that that's a big problem in all our schools.
Can't come to school.
Yeah. So we're gonna, um, Heartland specifically will decrease chronic absenteeism from fourteen percent to ten percent. And.
Can you define chronic absenteeism again?
Yes, it's, um, what is it, more than seven percent of the days, I think, they're absent. Yeah, there's a, there's a, like a national definition of it. Our wellness committee, uh, our W S T C committee really worked on this. They have, um, criteria set up, um, Katie Burke, who's the nurse in Windsor. She, why, she's at Woodstock, so Heather's a little, little sour about. She's, yeah, she's pretty awesome. So they've been working together on, um. Some protocols for what we're gonna do with students who are chronically absent and how we're gonna engage them. They went to, um, this meeting that we have annually, um, it's E P S D T funds, which is. Funds that are generated from time studies by the, by the school counselors and nurses. And they get to decide how they're gonna spend that money as a group. And they've decided to offer, um. Stipends for school engagement coaches. So there are three school engagement coaches across the S U that will work with these families proactively when they start to be. Not quite chronically absent, so that's one of, one of the goals in here. And, um. That one I did with you. And then there's a section on how we're gonna progress monitor. So that's the plan. It looks, the plan looks similar across, the plans look similar across the S U. Cause it's based on S U data and then specific district data, but we needed to share that with the board.
Do we have to approve it or we just?
Yeah, you just have to know about it and if you have questions about it, that's, um. And that includes the report.
Okay.
Stop sharing my screen.
So, um, items for discussion, uh, followed by motions. Uh, we have, um, the discussion that we have continued, I think since like April. Of algebra for eighth grade.
How did you start the year this year?
It's in place.
It's in place, yeah.
Cause you hadn't discussed it yet.
Five.
You have five kids.
Five kids.
We have five kids, okay.
Five kids going into first period.
Yep, first period, they return by nine.
And that.
There is not the, uh, there's not a math eight component to it.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and those five kids are out of our tiny class of fifteen, so. Make it clear that this is the year with the, it's not a lack of algebra interest, it's a lack of. Of, yeah, bodies in the class. Um, okay, so I'll leave that for discussion. So do, what, how do we, so will we feel fine about them not getting grade eight math or?
I do not feel fine about them not getting grade eight math.
And so is there some like opportunity to make grade eight math one of these great electives they talk about or like algebra becomes the elective?
I think we talked about, so Michael, you and I talked about, or Liz Burton and I talked about it, but it's about time. And it can't be during one of the elective blocks, cause it's like thirty minutes or thirty-five minutes, which isn't.
Which are the times that are, are middle school teachers, that people who would support it.
Yeah.
Are, have to get their prep and their lunch, right?
So.
So it's beyond the mark.
Yeah, yeah. And so, Michael, I would love to keep the conversation like rolling at some point to try to like. Figure out a way to make this happen, so we don't have to transport kids and, you know, like, I don't know. I, I got.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
I mean, I do, like as a parent and as an engineer, I do think that it's very important to offer kids algebra in eighth grade. Because. That is when, as an engineer, that is when my engineering, I was able to become an engineer because I started algebra in eighth grade. And I would have had to have done summer school in college in order to make up coursework, in order to get through the curriculum. So it's, that's where it starts. So it's really important to me.
Yeah.
But I won't be here, so.
But I do. I think it's important, I mean, I'm, I'm, my daughter's taking geometry as a freshman. And she said, oh yeah, it was really great, my mom, the first few classes, it was all the algebra stuff that we worked on and it was great. So I mean, we'll see later on if she's floundering and being like, I don't remember how to do whatever, you know, but, um. Yeah, I feel like it's been, I don't know, unfit overall.
I, I don't think the question is should we not offer it, it's how we offer it, right?
Yeah.
Cause the only two options are the computer-based one or going to Windsor, correct?
At this moment.
At this moment. I mean, you know, what we, what we want to try not to do is track students, right?
Yeah, like this, like we wouldn't offer eighth grade math slash algebra for one cohort and not the other.
Correct, yeah.
Right, cause we just wanna eliminate tracking.
Especially with this year, we'll only have one eighth grade.
Right, right.
Right.
But future years.
Yeah.
So then of course if they stay in their cohorts the whole time.
I see, cause the issue is that if you put the, all the algebra kids in one class, you've got one class that's, that's somebody that'll get to class.
Yeah, yes.
Well, yeah, but then they don't mix up, right? So then they all, they travel as a class.
Is, if they did it online, it was not in my impression they were gonna get the grade eight math online either.
Same thing.
So I, cause I remember the discussion last year was really about like online versus going to Windsor, but, but the, but the discussion about adding in grade eight math. Is separate, cause it's not like the online algebra gets them grade eight math in any kind of way, except that they could do grade eight math with their classes. And then algebra could be done online at any given time during an elective block.
Yes, I believe that is what we talked about.
Or at home.
Or outside of school.
Through B T V L C.
Which is, which is.
Dedicated.
Yeah, that would be.
They would have to be.
That's a, sort of an equity issue, yeah.
That's, I think that's what they're, well, that's what they are doing at Leathersfield this year, so.
And how many kids have started then?
I think it's just a handful.
I worry that's gonna be, I worry that's like gonna be, require so much parental, that that's the big equity piece, right? Cause you gotta have parents that are engaged in making that happen then.
Well, and you're also making kids choose between math and sports.
Which for another elective.
That is also, I mean, I think I shared this last year, I mean, that's what we did at my old school too. Like kids who were doing algebra. Were doing through B T V L C outside of school on their own, taking eighth grade math with me when they were in school. I also supported any questions they had in math, like even though I wasn't their teacher, but I didn't, I didn't teach their algebra class. And they were doing, that was a choice. And yes, they, I had several that were still participating in sports, including hockey, which is a large time-consuming thing.
Yeah.
But I have students who did that and then they were able to get the eighth grade math and also add lots of court can be eighth grade math class.
Yeah.
I mentioned it before, I think it's a little lack of school personnel, but that was, that's how we did it.
Yeah, so we did eighth grade math over the summer in our house. So there's also that option.
Keep talking.
I'm just ruminating, I'm just doing, cause I have so many, I have, I have slightly different views, but that's okay, we can.
It does make a difference when you get the freshman year in college.
It seems like this is something we should dedicate some time to in like April, right? December.
Yeah, it's a scheduling issue that you have to take a look at.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta take a look at the schedule and there's gotta be a way to confuse what you need to, you may have to.
I mean, I wonder if there's a way to do it where it's, you know, it's, I mean, we have the capability of zooming into an actual class, right?
That's what I've wondered.
Are they, are they, are they in this school zooming in for, I don't know, three days, four days? And in class some days, I don't, I don't, I don't.
I mean, we can also share resources with the S U where, you know, we have a teacher that would rotate first period. So that they, students could get an in-person experience once or twice a week. And then they were remote, so they would have that connection. And I would think that you could make it so that the class wasn't huge. I mean, like, like they were getting bust to Windsor, but having that combined eighth grade algebra. Individual class.
I mean, they're still not gonna get eighth grade math, right?
Well, they could touch on the, well, yeah, they wouldn't get the full eighth grade math.
Right.
But there's a lot of overlap, I mean, I know, like, I just went through the eighth grade curriculum and picked out the pieces that. We didn't know in our house and.
I mean, it's staffing too. If you're talking about putting a, putting a group of students in a room, there's gotta be adult supervision.
Right.
Preferably somebody that knows how to do math. And.
Yeah, right.
Technology.
Yep, yeah.
I think there's a way to do it.
Yeah, there's gotta be a way to do it.
Yeah.
Heather, you're just quiet, you're just.
I'm quiet, just ruminating.
So we need to decide, we need to, I'm, I've been charged by the S U board with meeting with all of the math teachers, get their recommendations.
Yeah, I think that's important.
I sent them an email in the spring and said we'd meet in the fall, so I would gather them up and see what they think and bring that information back, yeah.
I mean, I think the other important piece is that both, I mean, now granted, our kids are at Hanover. Um, but the kids that are not in geometry this year, um, feel stupid. And feel like they're left out. And it definitely feels like, um, they're lesser. And those kids are really struggling with that.
Like the other Hanover kids, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and that is Hanover as well. I mean, there, there is a freshman in Trevor's pre-capitalist class, so. There's a, a bit of a push of the math side at that school, but I think that. I feel really strongly that I would not have got through engineering school without summer school if I had not started in, um, algebra in eighth grade.
So do they get eighth grade math the entirety of the year, basically? Like the, from start to finish? And how long are typical periods that they get that?
Forty, forty-eight minutes, forty-five minutes.
Forty-eight minutes.
Forty-eight minutes.
Yeah, five days a week. Five days a week.
How hard, would, would, would you be able, no, maybe not, cuz you set a schedule, and, but, if you like. Did more, like, split it up in semesters, so you did the eighth grade math, and then the second half of the year, you had the option then to do algebra. But then you'd have to.
Can't shove that all in.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, they'd still get stuck doing algebra again.
Yes. So I'll, I'll try to get that meeting scheduled and bring back information. This sort. Yeah, it's couple of months, so we can decide.
From the retreat.
I'm dealing with family.
Your, um, your board goals that you've decided on at the retreat are.
Yeah.
One is community engagement, so I think that's very appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
Right now. Uh, two was staff engagement with the board. Three was transparency in decision-making, and four was engagement with the legislature, those were your board.
Oh, they're down at the bottom on the radar list.
Yeah.
I'm like, wait, those look good.
Yeah, did she, did she already correct them?
She already put them on the radar list, so let's, let's approve the radar list.
Okay, so I will, uh, take a motion to approve the, uh, what is highlighted as the radar list, which is our old name for board goals, but I still like it better than board goals. Um, and, uh, I'll take a motion to approve that based on our discussion, um, at the retreat.
So moved.
And moved by that.
Second.
Seconded by Heather, okay, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Any absentions? Okay, that passed five to nothing. Okay, uh, moving on, um, S U Budget Committee Representative.
Why, why you on that? Is that you?
It was last year, Ryan.
Oh, good, okay.
Well, Hannah, and then I've got it.
Yeah.
Just like I somehow magically jumped the.
Listen, we have hired, I have two partners coming in August of two thousand twenty-six.
Nice.
And I, my schedule will no longer say vacation, hard battle, shot call, I can actually like take a day of vacation, or I'm gonna turn off my pager, so. One more year, and I want some days off.
One more year.
She's gonna take a day off, and then I'll reconsider S U board.
It's gonna be the same meeting schedule as it has been Friday mornings, remote, and starting and se- starting. Uh.
Congratulations, Ryan.
What, what time of the day is it?
At nine A M, they're about thirty minutes.
Cuz as, like, working people can do that.
And they are, there's usually three or four of them. Just pulling up the calendar, Larry was talking about them today, but I'm not doing it.
And they're all remote?
Yeah, they are remote, they start, they will be scheduled.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Scheduled. Two of them, I just have to do, uh, okay, so one will be, the first one will be September. Sorry, I'm very slow right now, September. Twelve? This is the first one, and then the next one is the nineteen. So the first two are scheduled, September twelve and the nineteen.
I know.
Wait, why is it they're back-to-back?
Because, um, we normally do them the first and the third, but this Friday is the first and.
Twelve, man, so it's every other, and how many, how long is going for?
It's like four meetings.
They're, it's usually like four meetings.
So, September, October.
They, he schedules an hour, they're usually, I don't know, you were there last year, thirty to forty-five minutes.
When's the ones in October?
It would be the first, which would be the third, and pretty sure the third, and then the seventeen.
Alright.
You gonna do it?
Sure.
And if you can't make a meeting, Ryan, it's okay, we can catch you up.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, that's, uh. For all the people that.
Can't.
I prefer to do it.
We make a motion for Ryan to become the, uh, S U.
Oh, yeah. I, I think we can just do that.
Okay, there you go.
By unanimous consent.
There you go.
Just to say to our grand, I think. Grand appreciation.
So, the, the piece I wanted to add to this item for discussion is, um, it was brought to my attention that the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Parent Guardian Handbook. Has this clause on fundraising, which states that all fundraising activities must be shared in advance with the school board.
Yeah, and that is.
And the question was whether or not that applies to the P T O. And my assumption is that the P T O operates with some blanket preapproval for fundraising activities on behalf of the school. And that therefore they don't need to come to us with every fundraising activity. And that's what I said, and I wanna confirm that that's correct, cuz I said it with a lot of confidence. Nice to our.
So how do we make it out? So my understanding is, yes, that is true, but that there is a, a you-appointed designee, so in other words, they just have to. Run it through the school principal or administration to make sure that it's not doubling in effort, it's not anything that involves.
Okay.
Because what I've had happen, what I had happened, uh, previously is that there's a fundraiser, all good, but some of the fundraising, um. Uh, rewards or whatever was like. To the liquor store.
Yeah, 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 like, not appropriate.
But he's gonna direct it to the, right, to the gun and ammo, which understandable, so that was the second checkoff. Of being like, okay, just run this by the principal to let him know that this is what we're doing, as a designee.
And the P T O is doing that, I presume, right, the P T O has.
I haven't had anything come to me yet as a fundraiser, so there should be, and we just met, and we'll, we'll bring that up, there should, everything that's fundraising.
Okay.
Absolutely should follow hierarchy, and the principal and superintendent should know what's going on in the event.
Okay, just so you know, what it says in the handbook is the school board, and I was like, I don't think we are responsible for that, so, but.
So, you can just, um, yeah, I mean, technically, that's what it says, and in.
Under designation, you can designate.
Yes.
So Frank Romeo is now gonna be our designee.
Got it, okay.
Should we take a motion to designate you?
Okay, so moved. Okay, we're designee for P T O fundraising, any fundraising.
Any fundraising.
Yes, it can be fundraising.
Yep.
Also, okay.
Okay, so it was moved by Hannah and seconded by Ryan, um, is there any further discussion?
Just can we make sure the P T O knows that?
Yes, I will absolutely.
Uh, do you, do you know was the P T O coming to you guys last year with fundraising activities?
Or they're just doing their thing?
They're just doing their thing.
They were just doing their thing.
Okay.
Yep, I will reach out to them, cuz we already had a discussion about concessions.
Okay.
Um, right, and so I think putting some protocols in place, so like handling money and things like that would be great.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Is there a form? That is a request. Cuz there should be, yes, there should be a form that has a signature of.
For fundraiser?
They, um, when I was the principal, I went to the meeting, so I knew what fundraisers were, and.
Can I put together a form?
You, you can, sure.
I would like a form.
You can do that, I, I know in, in, um, and, and the way that you're doing it is fine, in Weathersfield, they, they come in. The first meeting of the year, like, August, the P T O president comes and says, these are all the fundraisers we're, just informs the board. These are all the fundraisers we're planning to do this year, and he's like, great, so you can do it however.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just think, like you even said, the part, there's such a high participant, there's gonna be a lot of things that are gonna be thrown around, so if we could just follow a little supplement, even if it's just like Google and say.
Yeah.
This is the fundraiser checkoff done.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not just the P T O, right, like, eighth grade class does.
Correct, right, correct, everybody.
Drama club.
Right, and what I said to Alexa was just my, my impression is that the P T O has this, like, it is a sanctioned.
Yeah.
Fundraising organization that sort of has this umbrella approval to fundraise on behalf of the school, community.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but somebody just needs to keep track of when fundraisers are happening, and you don't want multiple fundraisers.
Okay.
You don't want two possible, they're the same thing.
Yeah, and you want to make sure that you don't have other entities that are gonna do fundraising under the guise of.
P T O, and it's actually to raise money for.
Right, and it's to raise money for a football helmet or something like that, and it's not really sanctioned by us, so that's, I think, will also help.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe, I'll just pass that along, sure.
Yeah, but. Um, I'm gonna put in another plug that we figure out how to have Venmo at fundraisers. That would help.
P T O has figured it out.
P T O has, and I think they have their own, though.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, we still need it.
Club.
Yeah, but within the school, we need.
Drawn in the band, and no one has cash anymore.
Nobody carries cash anymore, so having a fundraiser where you would do small dollars makes no sense anymore. And, I, other schools are using Venmo, so there's got to be a way that we can do that.
I mean, I'll ask, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be a way that Larry can figure this out.
Yeah, I can ask.
Cuz it's hurting, it's hurting our fundraising, and it's also, I mean, what's sad is that, like, we've seen kids get turned away. Because, like, if you're running a fundraiser, you can't just be like, oh, yeah, well, come on in, you don't have any money. And so, kids and families have been turned away.
That was a real troublesome at the, um, haunted house last year.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can get it solved by Halloween, that'd be amazing.
Yeah, that's why I'm putting it out there.
I, I'll ask him, I can't remember the, the reason, but it's something about accounting.
It's accounting, I know, but there's gotta be a way, like, we can't just.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a way to raise money without, yeah.
Like, why wouldn't you be functioning any different than my brother?
Some accounting rules, I have no idea.
I mean, yeah, I, I recognize there's a lot of accounting. There's just got to be a way to do it, just against.
I can ask him.
But right now, the P T O has a Venmo. I think the P T O does. But. Cuz they were even like willing to let go of it as a continue.
But then we were told we're not allowed to do that too, and so that's where it's, like, there's gotta be a way. Gotta be a way to make it.
There was not like a check and balance of like. What's coming in from the drama club and then what would go out for the drama clubs, which is a check.
Right. Right, okay. And then.
Which I understand that.
You know, we also couldn't use personal ones, like, I, I think.
Yeah.
There were a lot of roadblocks thrown up with no, um. Viable solutions.
Or even potential solutions.
Okay, uh, I think we are at setting the next agenda, which is really weird, cuz I would be here. Yeah, so, on the, on the work plan.
Perhaps we should ref, we need to reshuffle the board.
Reshuffle the board.
As a top priority.
Do you, so on.
Not even in here, it's, it should be the seven. It's a, well, in the work plan, part of the board took off October and I think April for board meetings, so your next meeting.
But I don't know if we can, uh, can we do that without, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask nicely, like, can we take off October? If we don't have a president, like, should we wait until November, or can we go the other way? And have an October meeting, get that all squared away and then skip November?
No, we need, yeah, no, we need November.
I mean, I feel like we could have a short, just because I feel like we need to start recruiting for this spot.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
I also think, just, yeah, the Act seventy-three stuff, like, I think is.
Yeah.
Really, and I think we need to revisit, the, I think we need to revisit it, or potentially consider that being a community meeting.
I mean, they're all supposed to be.
I didn't get that, you try again.
Why wasn't it to you?
I gotta be phoned, and that man's been my voice ever since.
It's out.
So, it would be, let me say, October.
Seven.
Seven, would be the next one we'd have.
Maybe the seventh, yeah.
Yeah, the fifth is a Sunday, so, there would be reorganization.
Let's do it. A reorg, and then, should we just open it up to community?
Yeah, I think we probably should think about that.
And. And like, how do we do that, like, we have to really think.
I think we get, I think we get Linda to send an email, I think we get, like, we put it on the listserv, and we say, like, wanna make sure everyone's aware of the process. Being undertaken by the state of Vermont, and, you know, the school board is, is like, not, doesn't have. Control, but it would, wants to hear from the town as we.
Is there gonna be information at this meeting, is it informational and talk about it, or like, are we just talk, like, are we just gonna let people talk about?
I think it could be an administrative report, very similar to what you did, I don't think it should be a lot of information, I think people. I think anybody who shows up very likely is wanting to come with some of their own information.
Cuz I, like, I mean.
It's a quick overview.
I just wanna make sure that like.
An update of the things we know.
Maybe someone comes to this meeting who knows nothing about act seventy-three, and this is like, they're like introduction-esque, like, the horrors that are going on right now.
But I mean, I think the point is there's not a lot of information yet.
Yeah, there's not, this is like what they're doing, and that should be like, here's what they're doing, what are your thoughts?
What would you want to do?
Well, I think laying out what is the state proposing as a process, this is what, like, I think that.
So what is the state proposing as a process?
Yeah, like, laying that out.
Well, no, this process, the redistricting committee, the redistricting committee, so.
Yeah, I think. On top of doing the act seventy-three updates, you guys need to find another board member. Um, and the way we've done it previously is to put out a letter to the community that says, like, we're looking for a new board member. Um, like, I had to write a letter of interest, um, and then we were interviewed.
Were they interviewed at, not at the meeting, but like, separate from the meeting?
Yeah, before the meeting. Okay, um.
But that'd be more in meetings, you go into executive session.
Yeah, interview people.
Or not, you decide.
So you could do, like, we could set aside, you could set aside October seventh for like a six P M. Uh, potential board candidate interviews, and then, um, set them up. Informational meeting.
Uh, Hannah, how do you feel about that, Ryan, how do you feel about that? Six o'clock, potential.
Um, I sort of think they should be two separate times, honestly, like, it just feels, that feels like a lot to do, I think like a six, I think asking, like, a seven o'clock community meeting feels late, right? Like, no parents are gonna show up to that.
Why don't we do a six o'clock meeting, and then after that.
Can we, I mean, I think, I think we're gonna need to talk offline about people that we think might be interested, right? Like, doing some recruitment, sure, we can send out something to the listserv, but I think, in reality, how did everybody get on the board, if somebody comes and says, like. So I don't. We'll say that.
You could do, you could just more in a separate meeting to do your interview.
That's what I think, I think we make October seventh really like, cuz I mean, it's.
Yeah.
In truth, we want somebody very interested, engaged by March, right?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, having someone show up, for, for those earlier meetings may not be as essential as having someone that can run in March, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we have a little bit more time for that, I think the Act seventy-three stuff is gonna happen.
I think that makes sense, okay, so you'll have a short reorg, you'll have a short reorg. And then, so you guys may wanna like meet at like five forty-five to do the reorg, so that by six, you have.
So meeting starts at five forty-five?
Yeah, and then the public session starts at six, cuz you don't wanna do the reorg.
Right, yes, we could do that at five thirty, and then.
We could, we could probably vote, yeah, I think, let's do five forty-five, we can do it fast, there's only, there's only four of us.
And it usually takes us fifteen minutes to do the entire board, you only need to do two positions, so.
Yeah, it's just two, it's just the chair and the, well, it could be the vice chair.
And the signer, the benefactor.
Vice chair becomes a chair.
Yeah.
And the signee, and just back up and.
Yeah, okay, and then an Act seventy-three. Community update?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And call for, call for comments, public session on Act seventy-three, yeah.
But yeah, review, and then. And then we should think about, like, are there people that we could invite to that that could, like, cuz you do a really nice job of presenting this information with. Sort of an unbiased and, um, but if you felt like that, if you wanted somebody else to, I mean, I think, I don't wanna put that on you, but I think. You have a lot of insight and knowledge, and, so, you know, I don't know, yeah, we can think about whether or not we want somebody from the legislature, or. I mean, we could invite Holcomb. We could invite somebody from the rural school alliance, but at the same time, like, I think for this meeting, actually having someone that's. Like, doesn't seem like they have their own agenda, right, like, the. Doesn't seem like they have their own agenda, right, like the.
Right.
The rural school alliance agenda is pretty clear and I'm not saying I'm not aligned with it, but. There may be people that show up that don't have that, you know?
Yeah. Let me think about that, I mean, if you are. If you are, if your goal is to hear from the community, hear what they want. What their priorities are. Then. And, and we're recording and taking notes, who, who would you want in the room to hear that information?
I mean, Holcomb would be perfect to hear that, right, actually, and we could invite her to also.
She's, she could show up online.
She could show up online.
Yeah.
She's on the task force, um, there's another superintendent who's retired, um. Name is Jen, um, I haven't heard of her last name, but she's on the task force as well. So she might be, I mean, anybody that's on the task force, it might be good to have them here.
Maybe we should just invite them all and maybe at least one will show up.
I mean, it can't hurt.
Michael, what'd you say?
Do you have particular questions that you would like to ask the community?
I haven't thought of that yet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested, I think what I'm, uh, well, I don't really wanna ask them, I mean, I think I'm interested to know sort of how. You know, what people's thoughts are on the high, I think the high school stuff becomes the much more interesting.
Yeah, I'm interested to hear of like, what are people thinking of high school configurations?
Yeah.
Around.
What sound like acceptable outcomes here.
Yeah.
And I think also, like, are, like, are people willing to, like, get rid of elementary schools? And like, you know, cause this district itself also has small elementary schools, like Albert Bridge. Is a small one, right, like, and like, I know that has nothing to do with Heartland, but it could if they. If they, if they have to close down their school, like, do those, like, are we gonna welcome the Albert Bridge kids?
Well, each district is, each district has, is supposed to have three thousand kids.
Yeah.
Four to eight.
Fourteen.
Each district and not a supervisor union.
Depends what they go with, one of their plans has to include supervisor unions and the other two do not.
So I mean, I don't think we're even gonna, even with the configurations we're looking at. We won't be meeting that number threshold.
So I did the math with Woodstock, Hartford and Windsor and all the elementary schools, it's three thousand nine hundred eighty-four kids.
So wait, that's Windsor, Hartford.
Three thousand nine hundred eighty-four kids.
Oh, so we just need sixteen more kids, seventeen, I'd say seventeen.
Seems like close enough.
Yeah, which is probably gonna be the.
Windsor, Hartford.
Hartford and.
But did you include like Bridgewater, Reading?
Uh, yeah, all this, cause on the website, and again, this is like from whatever the date is on the Vermont website.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it'll say like whatever their school district is and it'll list it all there and then I took all those numbers.
We're gonna start calling you Colleen if you're not careful, showing up with the maths.
The monies.
Yeah, data, data analyses, okay.
Okay.
Well, this is very stressful.
We need an invitation to the community.
I mean, your kids are already in their high school, you don't have to worry.
Cause it impacts, it impacts the whole fabric of the state.
Mine won't be.
Yours won't be.
Mine won't be.
One of yours will be grandfather.
I mean, I'm.
No, this really does impact the whole fabric of the state.
But then it's also like, is it family's grand, so, cause then it's like, oh, my kid is gonna be going all the way up here for school and now my other kid's gonna be going down here for school?
Wasn't, like, it's with act forty-six.
No, it wasn't.
It was all like the kids.
Yes, yeah. We need a, a, some sort of flyer inviting the community to October seventh at six o'clock, a public session to discuss act seventy-three. And hear from the community, quick overview of what's, what's going on and then.
Open it up.
Open it up to what are your thoughts and feelings about high school configurations and local elementary schools?
Yeah.
Okay. And then they're gonna come up to a microphone and have. Three minutes to share their thoughts and we wanna keep it pretty structured.
Yeah.
Three minutes to share.
Sure.
Well, normally.
Frank Romeo wants thirty seconds.
You want the task force, the members of the task force.
Invited.
Invited to the meeting.
As long as they don't count it as one of their public outreach sessions.
Correct. Yeah, okay.
But let's just work.
That makes sense, this work enough.
And then, uh, a letter to the community. You wanna hold off on applications for the board seat until after October?
I think we can start asking for them, I think it's gonna, I mean, let's be serious, people are gonna look at that email and be like. Delete and it's gonna require us being like.
No, 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 P.
Here's how you spell it, P E Z, okay?
It's an interim board member. I made a post-it for my husband.
Yeah, I did, we had to do some spelling tests with my parents.
And then do you have a, do you want on that communication to let people know they need to write a letter of interest that all they need?
Yep, it's a letter of interest.
I would like to be on the board.
And so I wanna hang out with you guys till eight o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And then.
I mean, can we just start with, just reach out to a board member for more information, cause I feel like if we make this hurdle too high, people wanna jump. And I'd rather just know who's interested, so that they can.
Because I think also, I mean, before anyone wants to write a letter, it's also like, well, that's the time committed.
Yeah, what is this whole thing?
Yeah, yeah. Not a lot of education policy.
Reach out to a board member. Like, get your four names and emails.
Yeah, sure.
Need some emails, okay, and then we'll continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, I do not know of an executive session and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Hey.
I second.
Heather, Ryan, all those in favor?
Is anyone on like tough work in June?